We're going to call this meeting to order. Today's date is December the first, 2025, and this is the Tel City Common Council Meeting. If everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. Okay. First item is adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda by Larry. Second by Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item is presentations of minutes for your approval. Council, you should have your October 6th, October 20th, and November 3rd. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes as presented? We can approve them all at once if you want.
Motion to approve all three.
Motion made by Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item is approval of council payable vouchers. Council, you should have a copy of those going around. There it is. I see it between Mike and Phillip here. But any questions on those? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is comments of citizens. If there are any citizens that would like to make any comments, come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee and board reports. We'll start first. Let's start at the end. We're going to start with Gerald, Councilman-at-Large.
I don't have a whole lot. We did attend, several of council members attended the exit meeting on the State Board of Accounts. Turned out pretty good for what I thought, Tom, and pointed out a few things we need to do. I know we're not doing partners and prides, but driving around there sure are some homes that went the extra mile, really, really decorated.
For Christmas? You're talking about flights? Oh, yeah.
Going over there on 20th and locked down from the dollar store. I mean, I don't think there's a dry spot on their house. And there's one on Mozart, turned into your radio by us, up there by you. So I'm just saying, we don't do that, but appreciate it.
There's, I've had some, a couple residents ask me, and maybe it's something we could consider, maybe not this year, but award, given an award for someone who is going to be the prettiest or the most, or something along the line. And I don't know if it's something the city council wants to do, or that's something we want to task a committee or a group to do. But just be thinking about ideas of the best way to go about it and structure that in the future.
That'd be nice for Tel City Strong, spearhead.
Well, it would be, but they're bound to a certain district with their downtown group, so they can't go out really outside of that. So it might have to be a different group, but I'm sure we could, maybe it's a chamber, maybe it's something along that line that we could ask them to help with.
I've got a little bit of a problem with that, and I understand the point of it, Gerald, but that puts a lot of pressure, or potentially puts pressure on people that don't have the means to purchase decorations, to pay for the increased utility usage. Though it may be small, it is increased usage. And I just have a concern about that.
Or the physical ability to do it.
And the physical ability to do it.
And maybe it's something that's a people's choice, but you know, we could figure something out. Let's do some research. Maybe there's other communities that have done something similar, and maybe they've had the same concerns that you two have, and how they've overcome that concern to make it work. Maybe there's different categories that might address that, you know? It's something to think about.
There's really decorated homes out there.
There are. They, they put a lot of work into it.
So that's all I got.
Okay. All right. Brian, Steve?
I don't have much. I did have one constituent ask me, how come we don't put Christmas decorations up 12th Street, on the other end of 12th Street? And I told him, I said, well, you know, that's, that's a pretty busy road. It's a state highway. I don't think we can. You may be able to, but I don't think so.
We probably could, but it would be a little, I mean, I know they can do it on 12th Street, but when the electric part puts those up, there's actually parking lanes there.
That's what I was about to say, is it's a safety factor.
When you go on Highway 66, there's not really parking lane. There's, there's lanes, but they would have to kind of closures and so forth. Might make it a little more of a challenge. Plus, we'd have to go buy them. I mean, those lights are not cheap.
Yeah, I told them, I told them it wasn't cheap.
There, some of, all of ours that, you know, since I've been in, was paid for by donation. And we took the old snowflakes and redone them and put new LED bulbs on them to keep them hopefully from breaking. The other ones were the little C bulbs that are kind of real thin glass, and if you just looked at it, sometimes they could break easy and it was wasted money. But plus, it would obviously use less electricity. But yeah, I would love to see that. If somebody wants to help spearhead some donations, maybe we can look at doing something up there or in other areas, but best we can do.
I hate to rain on anybody's parade, but I'd have real concerns with the fact that we'd have to take a driveline of the highway, put up, do some type of traffic control. There's going to be liability issues.
They do that at Hamilton.
Yeah.
I know, but there's his driveline.
I'm not, I'm not Hamilton's attorney.
I know, but I'm just saying where they have the drivelines and no lanes.
I get you. No, but I'd have, I'd have some concerns with it.
Undueable, but there's challenges in doing it.
Correct, yes.
I guess is better.
Yeah.
Challenges in doing that, and I'm not, I know, I'm just not as into that stuff as most of you are. I really would rather focus on things that are very meaningful, like sidewalks.
Sure.
We have, and I've been talking about this, and I know, Mayor, you said, come up with a program, come up with a program, but I've been in this council six years, and we, we haven't done anything as far as a formal program.
Haven't done a program. We haven't done a program, but like when the water department done stuff, we've made little.
Chris, I know that, but I don't know how much walking you do around town, but
A lot.
If you want to walk around sometime, I can play. I mean, they're dangerous areas.
I walk a lot.
They're dangerous areas. My wife runs in the dark, you know, before the sun comes up in the wire道. And so just personally, I'm just personally speaking for me, I would rather focus on issues like that than Christmas decorations, Brian. No disrespect.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just relaying that.
I know.
Yeah.
That, that don't, that don't bother me. Just did what I was asked to do. And I think that, Chris, that's all I got.
That's all you got? Okay. Phil?
No report.
No report. Mike?
The only thing in my ward, there's a couple of instances where the owner of the home has parked a big pontoon boat or a motorhome, not in front of their house. That's according to the ordinance, which I just found out from the chief. It, it has to be parked in front of the owner's house. And rather than just go there and attack them or ticket them, or I'd like to just make it known that that's the ordinance, not beside the house, or not behind it, or not across the street from it, right in front of it, right in front of the house.
And that is correct. I overheard that discussion with the chief earlier, that if you, if you have a RV, a boat, the obligation is to park it in front of your own house. So if a neighbor is complaining, in a very technical sense, they could complain to the police department. The police department could show up and issue a citation. So message to anybody out there that's got those vehicles, or those trailers or RVs, park them in front of your own home.
Most people are not abusing that. They're parking it under, they're renting a spot or something like that. But if you just let one or two, then before long, it's going to be 10 or 12.
Yeah.
Actually, I don't know how much good it will do, but I notice from time to time that she puts out a notice about such and such ordinance. Maybe he could issue something and maybe jointly, Mayor, on the city's page, just issue, issue a notice and.
It's a reminder in a lot of ways.
Just a reminder.
Some people who are new to the community may not know that.
That, that's true. I didn't know that until we were just talking about it. I, I knew they could park it on the street if it was licensed, but I didn't know that it had to be in front of their homes.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Larry?
Yeah, and believe it or not, my report is much briefer tonight, but I do have a report.
Merry Christmas.
That's why I say.
I can lengthen it.
Nothing about Christmas, Mike, Larry's talking all the time.
My main activity during this past month was attending a PCDC meeting on November the 11th, and I wanted to highlight just a few things from that, excuse me, particular meeting. And also, I want to make a comment that kind of governs a lot of what I'm going to say. Without getting into discussion over the merits, we know that the county has contracted with a private company for economic development activities in Perry County. And it's appeared to me recently that that company's trying to take credit for some activities that were done a long time ago and done by Perry County Development Corporation. Having said that, some of the things that Perry County Development Corporation has been involved in, which have been very meaningful to this county, is operation of the Ready 1.0 program. PCDC operated all that. I don't have the exact figures, but I know, I think it was over $2 million that came into this community. Some of it went to the sports complex. I mean, there were a lot of activities. They are down to, all of those funds have been expended, with the exception of $20,000. This is from round one, which Ivy Tech received some ready funds. And the equipment order has been placed for what they're using those funds for. But once, once that $20,000 is spent, then all of Perry County's Ready 1 funds will have been spent, which is good, because there is a Ready 2.0 program that Perry County has received an allocation for, including $1,195,000 for the construction of three market rate units in Tel City on a project called Trademark Apartment Homes. That has been allocated and approved by the SWIDAC, the Ready Board, and by the Indiana Economic Development Commission. So it's been approved. And, but before funds can be spent under the Ready 2.0 program, the region as a whole has to achieve a certain level of expending Ready 1 funds. And it's taken a while to get there. Perry County's spent all theirs, has spent all theirs, but the region as a whole has, they're now at 54%. So I can't remember, Chris, I don't know if you know what the percentage is of commitment before they release the Ready 2 funds. Like, I don't remember what, there's a percentage, but.
Yeah, there is. It's close now, I think. I think it was, I forget how much it was in another county that they needed to, they had some projects that got delayed, but they're, I think they're on track now. Yeah, there was, I.
Okay. So anyway, Perry County Development Corporation has been involved in both Ready 1.0 and Ready 2.0. And without PCDC, I don't think we would have received any funds. They also are involved in workforce development activities. And, and I'll just read the release in September. The Southwest Indiana Workforce Board, acronym is SWIN, named the Perry County Development Corporation its 2024-2025 Business Development Partner of the Year. The award, that's a regional organization, the Southwest Indiana Workforce Board. The award presented at the SWIN Annual Meeting in Evansville on September the 19th recognizes PCDC's outstanding success in strengthening the regional economy through innovative workforce solutions and dedicated community investment. The SWIN Board honored PCDC for its instrumental role in creating apprenticeship and pre-ashent apprenticeship programs, which have led to numerous employer referrals and generated tangible opportunities for long-term career growth in the region. In presenting the award, the board specifically highlighted PCDC's unique openness, responsiveness, and their sincere investment in our community's success as key drivers of their impactful work. So I wanted to report on that. And then I have a handout for you. Since I don't have a long report, I do have a handout. So there should be enough for everybody on that. As this makes it round, one of the programs that PCDC sponsors is called Make My Move Program. And they just recently, at our board meeting, was announced, they just recently received their fourth contract for their Make My Move Relocation Incentive Program, which offers 12 relocation spots for families. It began a few weeks ago. They've already have six of those 12 new people identified, just starting on the, on a program. The handout I sent you gives an overview of the 22 households who have moved into Perry County through this program during the past three and a half years, I guess. And I won't read all these states, but they come from throughout the country. There have been 22 families moved to date, including 48 people, because some of these households have students for our schools. The annual economic impact is 900, has been $931,000. A five-year economic impact, $3.9 million. The annual tax contribution of these households, $160,000. Annual jobs created, a little over 12. There were 35 adults and 13 children. Average personal income, $66,000. The average household income, $93,000. The average household size, a little over two people, 2.2. And then under the fourth there, the, one thing that was very interesting to me and to the PCDC board, 59% of the households that have chosen to move to Perry County had no prior connection with the county. They had no relatives, they hadn't worked here before, they hadn't lived here in a way, had no prior connection with the county. I think that, and, and then it shows the, the other connections, a little over 29% have family or friends, approximately 6% previously lived here, approximately 6% previously visited. So these are hard facts of economic development, of people moving into our community that are employed and helping to grow our community. And Perry County Development Corporation is responsible for all of that. So that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Any comments or statements from the city attorney?
I'd like to amend. I should have said that anyone who is parking on the street, you don't have to move your boat from your garage or carport out to the street. It's just those of you who are parking on the street has to be right in front of your property.
That's correct. Yes. Yeah. I knew what you meant. Yeah.
That's good extra time then. Can I have a shirt?
I have nothing to add. Any comments or statements from our clerk treasur?
I just have a couple this evening. Just wanted to let you all know that effective July 1 of 2025, House Enrolled Act 1392 provides that the commercial vehicle excise tax and financial institutions tax revenue distributions may be distributed into any fund maintained by the taxing unit. In the past, those funds, those amounts have also been put in the debt service fund and in our two capital development fund, the other two funds that have tax rates. And so now they're encouraging us to put it in our general fund. And I have received that money from the E. County Auditor, and that money has been received in our general fund.
And what does that amount to?
A little over, about $3,000. So it's a little bit, but.
That makes up for the 150 grand, eh? No, it, well, it does provide more flexibility.
And they advised us I needed to report it at a meeting so that it does get in the minutes. Because if you choose to put it in a different fund, then we have to do a resolution and all that kind of stuff. But I think we can just put it in our general fund.
Yeah.
And then I also wanted to let you know that I did receive our 1782 notices today, and everything that we submitted for our budgets, the state, state did not do any reductions or changing in our budgets at all. And the new rate for Tel City taxpayers for '25, pay '26, the rate is going to be 1.2425. The current rate that they pay this year was 1.2895. So it was reduced by .047. But we made a lot of cuts.
Yeah.
Because of everything that, that happened, that we had to make all those cuts, and now, yes, there is a little bit of a tax cut.
Give me, give me that '25 rate again, please.
The '25 rate was 1.2895.
Thank you.
And that is just the city's rate that I'm giving you.
Yes.
Our rates.
Yeah.
Total of the three rates.
Good. Did they say anything about the circuit breaker?
No, I won't get anything on circuit breaker until April or May of 2026.
Wait a little longer.
I'll wait a little longer.
They need to use AI to speed up this process.
They probably could. You're exactly right. Anything else, Connie?
That is all I have.
All right. So that concludes the committee and board reports. So moving on to old business, first item, item A is Executive Order 2026, and that's the.
New business.
New business. Well, I skipped old, because there's no old. So I jumped underneath. I'm sorry. New business, item A, Executive Order 2026 Holiday Schedule. This is Executive Order 2025-1, City of Tel City, 2026 Holiday Schedule. 2026 holidays start to be observed by the City of Tel City and its offices and employees as follows. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Good Friday, Primary Election Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, General Election Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Friday after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day. Being an executive order does not require any votes?
I, I have a comment, though.
Okay.
Before you finalize that executive order, I would like to make a suggestion. If my calendar is correct, New Year's Day falls on a Thursday.
New Year's Day, next year or this year?
January 1st falls on a Thursday.
Okay.
Does it not?
Of this year. I don't know. I don't have my calendar out.
This upcoming, is that what you're saying? This upcoming?
In '26.
January 1 does fall on a Thursday?
It's on Thursday.
Yeah. What do you think about, and I'm posing this for '26 only, adding Friday, January 6th, 2nd as a conditional paid holiday for all employees? My reasoning is because we've been unable to give them raises, and I think people might appreciate another paid day off. Just a suggestion, Chris.
It's a thought.
It doesn't have to set a precedent.
I like the idea. I think it's, it's actually, given that it wasn't a salary increase, that's a nice gesture. I think it's, it's worth looking into. I'll have to check our personnel handbook, make sure. Just, that's when it's hard to make any changes, because this kind of reflects that. It's, they're like friends. But I think we could maybe do, let me double check.
How do we change the personnel handbook?
Well, that's something kind I've been working on in our spare time. But, but I think we could still do it. The council could do it through a resolution.
Resolution.
Or I could do it through executive order, actually, I think. Could I?
You can do it through executive order.
Probably easier than y'all have to vote on, and I'm the one that gets in trouble. But I look good for it, and you guys don't get no credit, is that? I'm just kidding. But let me double check it. We'll have, we're going to have a special city council meeting on the 16th, or the 15th, I'm sorry. We don't have, it's a surprise, I want to tell you guys soon. So get ready. It's part of my report.
On the 16th?
The 15th. I'm sorry, I said 16th.
15th of this month.
We have, yeah, we already have a normal meeting. We're just going to do a special city council meeting, and I could do it. And I don't have to do it, executive orders in city meetings even, really. I don't think technically.
Now you don't.
So I could do it tomorrow morning if I wanted, but.
So we're going to have a city council after the water board?
Uh huh. We just got to talk about the times that we want to do it. But let me look at our handbook, let Jeff and Connie and I just think, sleep on it tonight. I think it's very doable. I just want to triple check everything. I don't want anything to come back and get state council.
I just, I just think it would be a nice gesture.
Larry, I think it's a great, a great idea. Is the council kind of like that idea too? They give me some naughtens to the heads, and so I, okay. Good to know.
So we don't have a primary day while goes with that then?
That becomes a floating holiday then, that they could, that employee could take off any day they want. And it's like an extra vacation day, in essence.
That's, they had that this year.
Yeah. For both general and, they had two of them this year. So now next year, we will have a general election.
Right.
We, we may have a primary. We don't know that yet.
Correct.
So we'll see on that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, that's it on that. So now, next item, item B is a resolution, amending resolution 1-2018. Jeff?
Connie, Connie and I can drive the bus on this one.
Yeah, you get to do this.
Yeah.
How about you do this, and Connie gets the next one?
I was going to say, Connie, you correct me if I state anything wrong here. This resolution is just to recognize something that's been going on for a long time, because way back when, the, the council simply never adopted a resolution to approve a change in the payment structure. About the way, the best way to characterize this, Connie?
I think they thought they did, but they didn't.
Yeah, yeah. It, it was, I believe it was in the minutes, there was just no resolution. State Board of Accounts just wants a resolution to formalize it. So that's what this resolution is all about. And if the council is so inclined, I will do a reading of this resolution.
Motion made by Larry for the first reading. This is Resolution 2025-18, just for your all's records. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this is just one and only reading.
One reading, yeah. I'll, I'll knock this one out. A real page turner. Resolution number 2025-18 is a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Tel City, amending resolution number 1-2018. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Tel City did on the 5th day of March 2018, adopt resolution number 1-2018, establishing a wastewater capital reserve fund. Excuse me. And whereas the Tel City Common Council authorized an initial transfer of $1 million from the wastewater general fund to the wastewater capital reserve fund. And whereas the Tel City Common Council authorized a monthly payment of $2,500 per month from the wastewater general fund to the wastewater capital reserve fund, so long as the wastewater department had $5,000 or more earnings in excess of expenditures for said month. And whereas, beginning in September of 2018, as a result of a clerical error, the wastewater department began depositing $5,000 per month in the wastewater capital reserve fund. And whereas, it has been determined that the monthly payments of $5,000 from the wastewater general fund to the wastewater capital reserve fund have had no adverse consequences on the finances of the Tel City Wastewater Department. And whereas, the Common Council of the City of Tel City now wishes to ratify any prior payments of $5,000 from the wastewater general fund to the wastewater capital reserve fund, and to increase the monthly payment limit originally established in resolution number 1-2018 from 2025. from $2,500 per month to $5,000 per month. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Tel City, Indiana as follows. All prior monthly payments of $5,000 from the Tel City wastewater general fund to the Tel City wastewater capital reserve fund are ratified. The monthly deposit into the wastewater capital reserve fund from the wastewater general fund shall be increased to $5,000 so long as the wastewater department has $5,000 or more earnings in excess of expenditures for said month. Passed and adopted by the Common Council of the City of Tel City, Indiana this first day of December 2025.
All right, council, any questions on Resolution 2025-18?
Yes.
Okay.
I wasn't hearing when this was passed. The wastewater general fund, you're talking about, explain that to me Connie.
The wastewater fund, it has nothing to do with stormwater.
You're talking about sewer plant money?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, sewer plant money, yes, yes.
Okay, so we've been putting in more than we should have?
Correct, into the wastewater capital reserve fund.
And what can that capital reserve money be used for?
Trucks, buildings, facilities, capital, capital expenditures.
Capital expenditures, okay, outside of the normal.
Operations.
Operate, yes, yes.
So we've had sufficient funds for, general fund for operations. And fortunately, we've made extra payments and had ample money for capital expenditures. So this is just ratifying, saying, hey, for whatever reason, this, this resolution wasn't adopted, but we're saying that's okay.
So it has to be the $5,000?
This is just increasing the limit, it could be, it could be less.
Okay, well, I don't know how to put this. They can only do that if we have extra money?
There has to be at least $5,000 of earnings in excess of expenditures before they can do it.
We do the same thing for the water department every month.
We're going to have one at the water board meeting then, later this month.
So $2,500 of the water.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, if our income is more than our expenditures, we will put $5,000 into this wastewater reserve.
Capital expenditure.
For capital expenditures.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I will, as I wanted.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right.
And I see that as a good mistake.
Oh yeah, yeah. It's kind of like saying, oops, I put more money in savings every month than I thought I did.
I think they were under the impression that they should be doing it, it just wasn't formally done on paper.
That's why we're ratifying the past expenditures and increasing the, increasing the limit amount so we can keep doing it.
And I assume we're earning interest off of that money also. I know it's.
Should be.
Yeah, should be.
So that strictly wastewater plant expenditure?
Yes.
Like, like when we had to buy, build the phosphorus removal thing?
Capital expenditures, yeah.
It could have went for the construction of it or a, or the match for a grant for it or whatever.
Right, yeah. And you know eventually we're going to have to do something.
Oh yeah.
Eventually.
Unfortunately, we have twice as much money in there as what we would have.
I just didn't, I wanted to clarify.
It either been in there or in the general part of it, but that's fine.
Yeah, it's just, it, the.
It just moved it over.
The wastewater department had it, one, one, one fund or the other. We're just ratifying the fact that we put it in the capital reserve fund.
Yeah, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry, second by Brian, any further discussion? All those in favor, sign if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Action carried.
There will be a similar resolution for the water board to adopt at the next meeting for a very similar situation with the water department.
To go, and it will go toward capital projects?
I don't have that in front of me, I can't remember the precise.
I swear I done the water one, but maybe I.
I've prepared it, I just don't have.
I believe you.
Prepared it, but no, we cannot find where it's ever been.
I was on the water, but I just.
It was, it was talked about, a motion made at a meeting, but they didn't update the resolution.
That's, that's exactly right, yeah.
For the water.
Yeah, for the water.
For the water.
So it was approved by the board, it just wasn't in the form of a resolution.
In 2018?
Probably, close to that time.
17 or 18. It was before I started and I started November of 18.
So that was under Mayor Adams then?
Yes.
That was a wild council that could.
It was. We were trouble.
That's okay, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, we were trouble. Okay, next item on the agenda is the additional appropriations, item C. This is 2025-19. Connie has the information, you want to do this one?
Do you want me to do this one?
Yeah, we're taking turns.
As Mayor said, this is.
I'll say, I'll do it if you want.
Resolution 2025-19, where it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated into budget now therefore. Be it ordained by the City of Tel City, Perry County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Out of the general fund, Board of Works budget, employee insurance, $35,000. And just a regular insurance, which is like the liability of workers' comp insurance, is $60,000. Out of the parks, recreation, general maintenance and repair, $10,000. And that's a total of $105,000 for the general fund. And as concession stand fund, equipment, $2,000, and that's a total of $2,000. And if you have any questions, I can explain what any of those are for.
Is there a motion to approve? There's no questions?
I do have a question. The insurance, are those increases? Are those payments you're making for next year's stuff, trying to take them out of this year's budget?
No, it is still to make payments this year.
This year.
This year, yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay, is there a motion then, to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry, their second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? All those in favor, signature if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Action carried.
Okay, I'm going to send this down for signatures, please.
All right, the last item we're into business is item D, 2026 Board Appointments. I put this on our, just so the councils up on what we've got going on here. So as far as the council goes, you will, our January meeting, be selecting a council president. Currently, that's held by Gerald. It's a one-year term, so that'll be one of your all's appointments. You've got another one, I'm going to pass them on, going over this here. You've got another one for the Perry County Development Corporation?
I don't think so, Chris.
I have it as a one-year term.
That's a three-year term. We went over this last year.
I think that's right.
It's a three-year term.
I'm telling he's right.
I'm sorry.
I'll, if we did, I'll double check that.
We had the same discussion, the bylaws of PCDC is a three-year term.
That's you, isn't it Larry?
Yeah, currently it is.
Yeah, I will.
They want to impeach me, I'm open for impeachment.
I will, I will double check, I trust you, I believe you, but just for peace of mind, I'll double, double check that, look back in the minutes and I'm, and if that's the case then, because you got the personal advisory committee, which that is whoever the council president is, so. I thought there was maybe one more. Now, as for myself, I will have the accepting letters of interest for the Alcohol Beverage Commission, that is a one-year term. And then, let's see here, the, now some of these are like what I would call internal, like council members would normally hold that, that role. Like the local emergency plan commissions, currently Brian Steen's on it, it's a one-year term. Philip, Parks Board, it's a one-year, it's a non-voting, but it's that one. Convention of Tourism, Personnel, I will have one for the Plan Commission.
They're going to be recalling this.
Looks like. The county will also have one for the Plan Commission too, I think, that expires. Nope, I'm just kidding. That's for the Water Zoning Appeals, it looks like, but. Check here, I will also have some for the revolving loan fund board and the Tel City Economic Development Commission and Housing Board. But what I will do is I will put a list together and we'll post this on our social media, our Facebook page this week sometime. What happened there? We'll post this on our Facebook page. Letters of interest, once we post this on, that will be due December the 29th at 4:00 PM. So we can, or I can make those determinations in our January meetings that we're not holding up any of these committees or boards that need appointed to them, so. Just be thinking about the council president, that's pretty much the only one that I can see. There might have been one later in the year, unless Larry's wrong, I'm kidding. No, I'm kidding you Larry, but other than that, I think we're good on that. Any questions on that? All right, move on to Mayor's Report, if I can find my report. I reported this in the Board of Works, but I want to just report to you guys in case you weren't here to hear it all. We do have Christmas in the park this Saturday. And always, if anybody ever asks when the Christmas parade is or Christmas parade, it's always the first Saturday in December. So you all remember that, if you hear it or may ask, you can relay that and, and remind them that's what it's going to be always, to kind of help people make note on their calendars. The parade will start at 4:00. Tel C Strong does the parade, the Chamber kind of does the more of the park things. It's kind of a team effort. If you still want to put a float in the parade, contact Tel C Strong on our Facebook page. Or if you don't have Facebook, you can reach out to our office, we'd be glad to put you in touch with someone to help get you signed up for that. Lineup will be, as it always has, in the school parking lot there. The route will be down Tel Street, down Main, and then it disperses once it gets Washington. Also returning this year, except it's only one day in a different location, is the ice skating rink. Last year, they had an ice skating rink, synthetic ice skating rink, and it was over in St. Paul's parking lot. And it was Friday and Saturday. This year, it's Saturday only, but it's over where Capers used to be. Perry Camera Hospital is their, that's their clinic parking lot. It will be there, but it'll be Saturday only from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So it'll be well before Christmas in the park starts and even after the parade. It's $5 a person for 30 minutes. And they will provide the, the skates and stuff, so you don't have to bring in anything like that or having that.
Are they going to block off any of the streets for that?
For that, no, but Main Street for the parade wise, they're going to have from Mozart.
500 block.
700 block.
700 block.
Yeah, we're like, what, should they five? Mozart to Jefferson will be blocked off during the whole Christmas in the park event. And then as the parade goes, both sides will not allow parking either. And then the circle around City Hall, like the drive, will be blocked off. Is that what you meant, or are you more towards the ice skating?
I meant the ice skating. When is that going on?
Saturday.
What time?
From 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They didn't request it, because it's on private property, so quality of, the PCDC's Perry County Quality Life Committee puts this on. They didn't request anything, so.
I, I.
I will, I'll reach out and see, maybe they have a plan where they don't need it, I, I don't know. Maybe there's a barricade that's put up along the sidewalk that changes some of that, I don't know. Initially, we're going to do it here in the park on the north side.
Yeah, that's what, at the PCDC meeting, they were talking about that.
It might have changed it. This does slope and maybe that has something, you know, the kids trying to slope. It kind of wanted to be a little bit flat, staying. I've never, I went ice skating once in my life and it worked out, but still.
But you didn't do it downhill.
No, I only just slipped it once and it was graceful, if that, if that's a possible way. But, okay, next item is, I will be attending the Mayor's Institute Conference this week on Thursday and Friday. I've been to Indianapolis, looking forward to that. All the mayors in Indiana get together and we talk legislative, we talk basically things going in our communities and how it's impacted them and how, and how we come up resolutions in our own communities if it affects us too. It's, it's a great networking, we've always learned quite a bit and really looking forward to that. I also sent out an email just before the meeting today that Christmas kind of came early for Tel City in ways. And if you hadn't seen it, I'm honored and pleased to announce that Tel City was awarded $228,574 and Community Crossings this year. We applied for this early in October and received notifications this morning that we were awarded that. So this is now an 80-20 match from the 25-75, so it's a little bit less, so. Really excited to get this, we'll put it out for bid, advertise it January, February. Because we have a shorter timeframe to have to do that in now too, so it's very exciting to get this, so.
I wrote to the award letter and if I recall, right, the contracts have to be submitted to them by March 1st.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the money is canceled.
Yeah, they, they shortened it by a month or two than what it used to be. Which Janice and Jim handle a lot of that and Janice already told me, talked today after we found out we was awarded it and we've got our plan in place, ready to, just got advertised like twice and things like that. We, she and I both feel very confident we'll meet that deadline well in advance and we'll be in good shape.
I noticed East Drive was included and that it badly needs it.
That and some of them more down on Fourth and Fifth Street, Fifth Street there I think, seems more of it.
All, all the rest of them are down on Fourth and Fifth Street there, right?
But we was able to get a better, I would call it, quote on some of their estimates through mobiles, what?
We going to fix any sidewalks with that money?
You actually can, but not that, you can get money for sidewalks, Community Crossing, but we've not, there's a, there's a different process with that.
Okay.
Last I heard you could. Now for the changes, I think you still can, but I'm not familiar with that at all yet.
Sidewalk, that border city or parallel to the river that comes out there by the P-Gate patio.
Oh, River Road Project? Yeah, they're, they're working on it. I'm not, I know the sidewalk itself, I think, is done, it's part of it. The road itself, I don't know. I, I think they've been doing some paving, but I don't know how this works with the cold temperatures and the batch plants and the paving. That's beyond my knowledge of how that works and so let's, let's hope they can get it.
It's visible as you drive, you know, past the patio.
I do know they don't want people driving on it, they've had some problems. So they've had to put more barricades up and kind of keep, keep us off it, you know, but we're really excited about it. Lastly, and this is probably one of the most important for, for some of you, December the 15th, the Board of Works, the Water Board, and we want to have a special city council meeting to kind of go over some end of year things that we need to do, and approvals, appropriations and so forth. And then I'll deliver my state of the city as well that night. I've got it halfway done. It's, as of now, it left for 36 pages. I'll try to condense it down to 30. It's not that many pages. Everybody's like, we ain't showing up. No, I'm just.
One piece.
People will be in hospital.
I'll be in hospital.
I'll be visiting you, Brian.
It's not, it's nowhere near that many pages, I promise.
He was going to keep it shorter.
I'm going to try to keep it shorter, I'll try to, and I'll pull a Barbara Ewing and keep it short.
Can you just email them?
Well, I have to deliver. According to state statute, you're, you're supposed to deliver one every year. I don't, you can make it one page, I think, but.
There you go.
But does it have to be delivered at a city council meeting?
I believe so, yes. I'm just going to say yes, because that's the way it's been, so that's a bad word to use, but.
I, I think it should be delivered at the Board of Works meeting.
A Water Board meeting? No, I'm just kidding. All right, so we need to talk about the times to have these meetings. We've always kind of shuffled around the, the meeting times to, to get them, because there's more of them and so forth. Do we, we could have Water, or excuse me, Board of Works, Gerald being here, we could bump that to 4:00. Do Water Board at 4:30, 4:45?
We got to remember that night we're taking bids for fuel and rock and all that.
And I've already, well, I told them they had to be in my office by 4:00.
So that's, it works.
Okay, I'm just saying that's.
Well, we could do 4:15 then, have the opening.
They did say they would open them at their 5:00 o'clock meeting, no.
Okay, well, we'll work on that, but.
If we advertised it that way, then we have to open it.
Sure, that's what I was about to say. Is the council flexible as far as, other than that time, working at, working our Water Board and Council meeting, as long as we let you guys know in advance?
Yeah, yeah, as long as I know the time in advance, I'll try to be.
Yeah, I'll try to be late, see that, I'll come to the Water Board, you have to leave. Make sure you guys, I'll have chief come bring you in. We did that back in the old days, I think, on some things.
He'll be driving to Kentucky to get out of his jurisdiction.
Yeah, we'll catch him on the bridge, we're kidding. But all right, so we'll work on that as long as nobody's any problems, so with that. And they, they normally go pretty quick and, and they're pretty good meetings, so. Anything else before we adjourn?
Mayor, and I can't remember, did you report on your roundtable at last month's meeting?
Not reported that, but I've got a press release, I about got ready.
Okay, I, I just wanted to thank you for using the culinary arts program. Those kids really enjoyed that.
I loved how them, I had a ball with them. And I think some of the mayors, when these kids came around, we had these mini sugar cream pies, which is the, the state pie, if y'all knew that. And we gave them little torches to come around and caramelize the top. So here you've got these high school kids. But you know, it showed how these kids are involved in this and they love it, and I think they had a ball.
They did.
And I did too, we.
They did, I, I, I really appreciate it.